Call to order the committee of the whole meeting for Tuesday, April 12th. First item on our agenda tonight is roll call.
Miller?
Here.
Rosado?
Here.
Beck?
Here.
Connolly? Connolly? Chantet? Solfa?
Here.
Wal?
Here.
Baron?
Here.
Lehman?
Here.
Ayazi?
Here.
Malley?
Here.
Uwer?
Here.
Serone?
Here.
And Vogelsinger? We have 11 out of 14.
Thank you. Alderman Vogelsinger did send out an email. She will not be here tonight and Alderman Connolly will probably be late. Okay, we have the school board with us tonight, so I'll let you guys go ahead and do roll call if you want to do that now.
Yep, thank you. Drumel?
Here.
Kilburg?
Here.
Present.
Present.
Here.
Okay.
Mathis is online.
I'm here online.
And you found a hand wave too. And if everybody that's online can have their mic muted during the meeting so we don't have any feedback. Second thing on our agenda tonight is reminders, please speak directly into your microphone and turn off your phones or turn the volume down. Okay. Item number three is approve the minutes for February 1st, 2022, and February 8th, 2022. Motion so moved? Second. Motion by Rosado, second by Solfa. Roll call, please.
Rosado?
Aye.
Beck?
Aye.
Connolly? Chantet? Solfa?
Aye.
Wal?
Aye.
Baron?
Aye.
Lehman?
Aye.
Ayazi?
Aye.
Malley?
Aye.
Uwer?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
Vogelsinger? Anne Miller?
Aye.
Motion carried 11 to 0.
All right, thank you. Do we have any items removed or changed tonight?
No.
Okay, we'll move right on to matters for public for items not on the agenda. Anybody here for anything not on the agenda tonight? Need to be online?
No.
Okay, then we'll move right to the consent agenda. Alderman Beck.
Oh, I'm sorry. The consent agenda is to approve the COW minutes from the executive session minutes for January 25th, 2022, and approval of the COW executive session minutes for February 1st, 2022. If not all moved, we approve the consent agenda as read.
Second. Okay, motion by Beck, second by Uwer. Roll call, please.
Beck?
Aye.
Connolly? Chantet? Solfa?
Aye.
Wal?
Aye.
Baron?
Aye.
Lehman?
Aye.
Ayazi?
Aye.
Malley?
Aye.
Uwer?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
Vogelsinger? Miller?
Aye.
And Rosado?
Aye.
Motion carried 11 to 0.
All right. You know, I always joked about how we should switch spots on the day this year and really confuse the mayor, but it's really confusing to me sitting here when everybody's in the different spot tonight. Okay, we'll move right on then to item seven, which is a presentation, the City of Batavia and the Batavia Public Schools Strategic Priorities. And we welcome the school board and Dr. Hitchens and Tony Iglesias. Nice to see everybody. And we're all in the same room. I like having regular meetings. I don't know how we want to start this.
Well, Lisa and I discussed that it might be nice as an initial matter just to have all of us introduce ourselves to one another because while some of us may have otherwise met, it would be an opportunity for us to, you know, know who each other are, how long you've served, and anything else that we care to share. So, Tony, would you like to start? And if you push that mute button, that's what turns the microphone on. Kat, yours probably needs to be turned on too, and Erin, the one in front of you, needs to be turned on too. Sorry about that.
Yeah, I'm Tony Iglesias. I serve as the chief financial officer for the school district, and I've worked for the district for a long time. I started when I was a sophomore in high school, and I've always been there. So, yeah, it's been quite a while working for Batavia Schools.
I am Lisa Hitchens. I'm the superintendent of schools. I'm finishing up my ninth year as superintendent, and I started working in Batavia actually in 1994. I've been a math teacher to some of the best and brightest that Batavia has, and I've been a dean, assistant principal, principal, and then nine years as superintendent.
I'm Kathy Drumel. I just finished my 11th year on the school board, entering my 12th.
I am Sue Locke, and I am finishing my ninth year on the board here and maybe starting my 10th. I've had two students, two kids, go through the district here.
My name is Erin Kilburg. I just completed my first year as a school board member. I've been a resident of Batavia since 2003, and I have three children and my wife Kathleen.
I am Chris Lowe. I have been on the school board for seven years. I have two kids in the high school, a junior and a sophomore.
I'm Erin Meitzler. Nice to see everyone. I am starting my fourth year on the school board.
Craig Meadows, third year on the school board, and I've got one in junior going to senior and another one in college right now, went through the school district.
Georgia Ayazi, just finishing up my first year on council, lifelong Batavian.
I'm Leah Lehman. I just finished up my first year on city council. I have two kids in Batavia School District, and I've been in Batavia since 2008.
My name's Jennifer Baron, and I've been in Batavia since 2004, and I have a daughter who's a junior at the high school.
My name is Jeff Shelkey. I've had the honor of being the mayor of Batavia for 41 years. But more important for this conversation is my family heritage. I am the last remaining living descendant of Louise White, alive and well in the city of Batavia. And I also have in my background, I served as the executive administrator of the estate of William J. Wood in Eldor Hoover. And I also got selected by the Gustafson family, who Alice Gustafson was one of them, to be the one who updated the history book on Batavia that John originally had started in 1962. And from that experience, what I wanted to share with you tonight is, is that if you look at the numbers, the Batavia School District has a legendary record of utilization of their facilities in this town. And they built two schools in 1860, one of which burned down in 1892, and then it was rebuilt, and that's the old Louise White School that still stands over there now, what was used, I believe, at the end of the day, 78 years in its second edition of the school. But if you start looking at the first edition of McQuain, which was originally the East West Side School, was built in 1860 and stood till 1949. So it had 89 years on it when it came down. And if you start looking at the buildings that we're talking about here tonight, and the superintendent corrected me, I thought we were starting with J.B. Nelson and Alice Gustafson, but we're going to go the other direction because those aren't as bad condition as Louise White and Storm School. Anyway, when those buildings were built, you know, I know, I think both Louise White or J.B. Nelson and Alice Gustafson are, were both built about 1954, 55. And so if you start doing the math on those, those are 75 years in round numbers. And then you start looking at the other buildings, we've really been a protector of the building, and I suggested to Dr. Hitchens before the meeting that one of the things we need to do is put together a little program in which we talk about the longevity and the life that Batavia School District has gotten out of their elementary schools. Because I think this is probably, if you start comparing us to the neighbors, and I and some other stuff I do, I have to do that, we got some history here that is going to be pretty hard for any other town to beat us as far as how much time we've put into these buildings and how much value we've gotten out of them from the first time they were built. And I think that should be a theme of anything you're going to go public with.
I'm Alan Wolfe. Only been here about half as long as the mayor. I'm in my, starting my 20th year on the city council. I went to AGS, sent three of my kids to AGS. We have all four of us graduated from Batavia High School. So I've had a long history with the school and been in Batavia since 1972, and plan on being here for a lot longer.
My name is Laura Newman. I'm the city administrator, and I have been a resident of Batavia since 2003.
Chris Solfa, I know many of you, you all know me. First term on city council, another Gustafson graduate. My kids all went to JB. One's already done with high school, one's in high school, one's in middle school.
Nick Serone, I'm about to finish my ninth year on the council, and I have three adult children that are products of the Batavia High School, or a school district.
Mark Uwer, fifth year. We're starting my sixth year on city council. Two children in the, well, one graduated a couple of years ago and one is a junior right now. Been in Batavia for, I think, 13 years. I didn't really pay attention. It's been a while.
I'm Abby Beck. I'm starting my fourth year on city council. I'm a product of Batavia Public Schools, and I have two boys at my alma mater, HC Storm School.
I'm Mike Rosado. I'm in my seventh year of city council. My wife and I have been here for 24 years, and both our kids started and finished it through Batavia School System.
Keenan Miller. I've been in Batavia since 2014. I have three kids, two at AGS, and one will be at AGS next year.
And Ron Mathis is online. Ron, would you like to introduce yourself? Yeah, sure. Go by RJ. RJ Mathis. I'm a school board member. I just finished up my first year here, and my wife and I moved here in 2013, and we've got two children at Storm. And Tony Malley? Hello, everyone. Tony Malley, fourth ward alderman for, I'm in my fifth year now, even though I've been elected twice and appointed once. The, and I apologize for not being there tonight in person. I've had some health issues I've been dealing with, but I would have liked to have been there. Lisa, I can't believe that you've been superintendent for nine years. What happened in this last decade? Because I did teach in Batavia for 17 years, and I can tell you firsthand, we just have a matter of six weeks left where our youngest is going to graduate, and Batavia Schools has served our children extremely well. Thank you. Okay, with that, we'll move to Dr. Hitchens. Would you like to do a presentation of your strategic plan?
Sure, since we're all talking about the schools coming? I'm sure people will remind me if I forget, but I have to share the screen when she unshares it.
Go for it.
I very much appreciate the opportunity to share what the school board is working on right now, and want to keep it at a high level because there's always something going on, and we're just so proud of our students and our staff and everything that we're able to accomplish, and we just take great pride and we take our role seriously in providing the best education that we can for our students. So this was a great way for us to just be in the same room, get to know each other, and learn about each other's priorities. The board, what we would like to talk about are two things, our strategic priorities, but also that facilities plan that we've been working on for many years now. I'm going to start with just a real high level of our strategic priorities because this year we spent some time working with focus groups and a committee that gave us feedback. Right now, the board, they have a strategic plan, and they also have three priorities that they've been working on over these past several years. They are authentic learning, early learning, and fostering a welcoming and inclusive environment. And what we did was we put a committee together of people who don't even have kids in the school, students, parents, and staff, and we said, "Tell us how we're doing." We interviewed hundreds of people. We had a lot of survey data, a lot of achievement data that they poured through, and they gave us some feedback on ways that we can get better and things that we're doing well. So just an overview of those three priorities, authentic learning, what that means in non-educational terms, is that is when we connect the learning to the real world. And why this is a focus of the board is because that is when students are most engaged. And Tony mentioned he was a teacher here. He was, that's the perfect example of authentic learning, where students are doing something that's very connected to the real world. Even though we like to always talk about the real world in our classes, some of those experiences where they're working alongside the tradesmen or the people who are in the field are what we consider to be authentic, and that would be the gold standard. But there's ways to have authentic experiences at all levels. It doesn't mean that we're going and building houses or boardwalk shops, which are two great examples of authentic learning, but it could be students having choice in their classroom about the types of projects they're going to do based on their interests. And the reason that we do that, everything we do is for the result of student achievement, and this one, we know students are more engaged, and when they're more engaged, they will achieve at higher levels. The second priority that the board has is early learning. What is early learning? For our definition, it's pre-K. We start educating students as young as three years old, kindergarten and first grade. And the board chose several years ago to make this a priority because the research is very clear about that foundation of having quality, early learning experiences does result in higher success. And there's quite a bit of research about it, and so the board, over the last five years, they've done things like expand early childhood, not just the facilities, but like I mentioned, students as young as three attend our early learning programs, students with special needs. But we've opened it up for community members, and we've removed the tuition. So typically, developing community, three, four, and three and four-year-olds are learning alongside our students that are there for special attention. And so we've greatly expanded that and removed the barrier of tuition for our community members, and as you can imagine, the waitlist is very long. And another thing that the board has done is we've had half-day kindergarten for many years now, probably 10-plus, 10-plus years of half-day kindergarten. And we've had a really great partner in the Park District that has jumped in and provided an opportunity for kids to attend school for that other half of the day. But this year, the board has taken that on, so we have all, almost every student now, we remove the barrier of tuition, and so almost every student is in our building for the entire day in kindergarten. Half their day is their kindergarten class, the other half of the day is a play-based enrichment, so they are here for the whole day. So that was their second priority. And then their third priority strategy is welcoming and inclusive environment. That means, just like it sounds, the students feel like they're accepted, respected, and included. And why this is a strategy is because it creates a sense of belonging. And again, everything that we do is in the name of student achievement, and we know that students who feel like they belong will achieve at high levels. And welcoming inclusive means we want everybody to be included, so some of the things that the board has done at the high level, we do a lot around this strategy, but at the high board level, they've expanded extracurriculars. That's the way that a lot of the kids feel like they belong. They simplified school fees and removed some of the barriers for school supplies for families. We made it easier, and we have plenty of opportunities for students to have a voice in the organization, and that feedback gets back to the board through like our strategic check-ins. And the, the sense of belonging is very closely aligned to our equity work. It's like one sub-part, it's a, it's a, one of the strands of our equity work. And what that means for the board, they just adopted their definition. And what this means is that, again, everything that we do is in the, is to have high expectations for every student and to help them achieve at high levels, but we do recognize that there's, students bring a variety of backgrounds and strengths with them, and so not every student needs the same thing to achieve at high levels. And that, in a nutshell, is what equity is, and we do have a whole section of our website devoted to all of our work. So lots to dig into there on our website, bps101.net backslash equity. That was our strategic update, and if you thought I talked quickly then, I would have to say that our Building Together Plan, I can give you the 20-hour version. I mean, just listen to the mayor helping us go back in time to 1860, but I know that people don't have time for the 20-hour version, so this is maybe a five-minute version. However, we have open houses where you can come and learn more, and we have so much information on our website that we've had to hone it down and come up with this maybe five-minute version, I'm not sure how long. So it really is at a high level, but we're here for you if you have questions or want to give us some feedback. Like the mayor said, we have a tradition of using our buildings as long as we can, and as a matter of fact, this is the longest we've gone without a new building or major construction since 1950, since we had some of those schools built, because the school does use them, and then when they get to the end of their useful life, either we have some major construction, like at the high school or middle school, or we replace those buildings. We did have a, our last major master plan was, we did most of the construction between 2009, 2012, and then in 2017, I came and talked to the city council, and I said, "Hey, we want to, there's some more items that need attention. We want to put together a facilities committee. We'd love to have representation from people with that city mindset." And so we came and spoke to you in 2017, and now here we are, five years later, and we have a plan. We did use local architects DLR group, and they helped us put together that educational master plan, which means we're not only talking about the conditions of the building, but we're also talking about how education has changed. And when those buildings were built in the 1950s, we actually do have different instructional strategies, different expectations. We brought in different programs. We house all of our, most, every special ed program in-house now, and those require different facilities. And so things have changed, and so that's why we have an educational master plan. And then in 2022, this year, you've been hearing about our community engagement, hopefully, and they, they were in everybody's utility bills. There's about 30 different ways we tried to advertise to everyone, not just the people who have kids in school. And so we've done some community engagement because we have this plan, but there are still some choices to be made. And the plan includes the basics, the safety and security, accessibility, those things that keep the kids warm and dry, but it also adds that extra layer of the buildings aren't functioning the way that we need to from an educational perspective. So they added that part to the master plan. So there's this, all of the concept, all of the concepts of things that we need addressed. And then for funding, we have three likely potential sources. People are always asking if there's state money out there, but they haven't, there really isn't, there really aren't state grants that have been, that they've been funding for projects. So really, it's local. Any building, projects that we do come from local sources, and we have three listed here. We have fund balance, that's like our savings account. We have operating funds, that would be our tax, our regular tax levy. And then we also have any referendum-approved building bonds. So when we put something on the referendum, when the community approves it, that is a separate line item on your tax bill that's called bonds and interest. And we are at a really exciting time right now. This is great news for us because we're able to do some things, because if you look at this chart, it shows, this is the debt schedule. So this is just the bond and interest portion of your tax bill. Well, this is the aggregate sum of what we owe still, and in the year 2025, we, our debt almost falls off, and then the next year, the debt does fall off. So if you can imagine if we just kept the debt like it was, we're in that position right now where we could do that and have some funds to be able to do some of these projects. Like I said, we have a master plan. I didn't go into a lot of details, but it is on the website, but there are, what we're asking the community, we have a plan, but you have a choice. Are you, we're, through our community engagement, we have three options. Option A, which is, we just let that bond and interest roll off of your tax bill, and then very little of this master plan will get accomplished, just the safety, security, the basics. Option B, we could, we have a plan that does not impact your taxes from where they are today, that bond and interest line item, and we can do some of the plan. And then option C would be if we did increase that tax levy for the bond and interest, then we would be able to do most of that plan. Now, I do have to have a big asterisk here and say it depends on the bond market at the time when we go issue the bond, so we can't tell you exactly how many projects we can get to, but it, because it depends on the bond market, but it also depends on the cost of construction when we bid out these projects. So we can't say for certain we can do these 20 projects because there's so many unknowns at this point. So there's a lot of caveats here, but we can get most of the plan done with option C, and quite a bit of the plan done with option B. And like the mayor mentioned, we do have four of our buildings that are nearing the end of their useful life. So option C actually does have those four buildings being replaced, so torn down and a new building built, hopefully on the same site to cause the least disruption to the students and the community, basically. So that would be option C, which does have those four buildings, AGS, JB Nelson, HC Storm.
Louise White.
Louise White, thank you. Louis, yeah, thank you. I just think I was paying attention. And Louise White, those are all in option C as a replacement, and we did do quite a few presentations about why does it make more sense fiscally to replace rather than rebuild? We have, once you start, or to replace rather than renovate, because once you start to do a certain percentage of renovation, then you have to bring the buildings up to code for fire safety. We have to add sprinklers, make sure they're meeting modern accessibility codes, and other things that start to add up, and the price tag actually flips, and it's more economical to build new rather than renovate. So that's why those four were selected for replacement in option C. This chart shows a little bit about what I just talked about with our debt, but what does that mean to the taxpayer? So the median home, what you would expect in option A, that's the one where we just don't issue any new debt, or we try to issue new debt and it fails. Option A would be for the median home, about a $750 decrease per year. And then the approximate spending, we would still have some money to spend, going back to that slide, where we still have some savings and we still have our operating funds, so we would be able to take care of the basics, make sure we could still maintain, keep up the roofs. It's basically the status quo Band-Aid approach, figure out what capital projects need to be done, which are most urgent, and get those done, and make sure that those safety and security projects are done. That's, that's a standard no matter which plan we choose. And then the community can also let us know that they prefer option B, which would be just maintain my tax and bond and interest part of my tax bill, and then we can, we can invest quite a bit into our schools. We can only do two new elementary schools, and we did determine that the two to start with would be HC Storm and Louise White, based on their condition. And then every school would have projects, improvements, or just maintaining, but there would be construction at every school in option B. And then option C would be getting most of our plan done, which would be those four elementary schools. The next steps in this year would be, we do have an open house, and then we'll do a version where you can go online and kind of watch the videos if you're unable to make it, but I'll give you more details about that in a minute. We need the entire community to take a survey, because the Board of Education has no intent of putting something on a ballot that the community doesn't want. The community should be a reflection, or the, the school should be a reflection of the community. And at our sessions so far, our four community engagement sessions, we've actually had quite a bit of support for options B and C, almost unanimous. Almost unanimously, people are saying unanimous. Almost unanimously, people are saying option A is not the way to go, because I think it's because even the people that don't have students at in our schools see the connection between the value of their investment in their home when we have quality schools. So that's just what we've gotten so far, but you're going to take that survey and let us know if 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 we're on point. So that is survey opens April 27. You're all going to get a postcard with the survey information on it. So look for that in your mail the day prior or right around April 27. And then the board will talk about it in June, take action in July. If they are putting something on a referendum, it would go on the November ballot. So that conversation, then we turn it over to the board, and then that's where they take over and have the conversation. So the more people that can take the survey, the better. That's what the postcard will look like when it comes in the mail. And then this is our community open house, our next one. This one is at April 27, because we realize not everybody is has been in our buildings for a while if you haven't had a student or just you haven't had the opportunity to visit your your kids yet. So we did choose Rotolo Middle School and JB Nelson for those open houses from five to eight. So drop in anytime, and that's where we're starting with our open houses, so that we can explain the plan and give you a visual to some of the challenges that we're facing in our buildings and just really, like I said, trying to make sure that everyone understands and gives us their feedback in a way that so the board can take your feedback and make the right decision. And that was I would open it up to questions. Tony can answer them, or that's how we split the presentation. I'll present, Tony answers questions.
That usually works good for me.
That was a very high level. So I have to say, there's a lot more information to be found on the website.
Yeah.
Or just by talking to us.
I'd like to say from my standpoint, and not having kids in the district anymore, I think it's good to have as much community engagement as you can to really try to figure out what you actually think is going to get supported before you go for a referendum. Because I know that that's historically always been an issue in the community. If people don't understand it, they don't know how to vote on it. They don't know why they're going to vote either way if they don't have the information, and it just doesn't help anybody to get to that point and go through everything you got to go through to get a referendum out, and then not to get something that you'd like to have happen from it. So I think you're going about it the right way. I spent a couple hours the last week or so going reading through the the stuff online, and it's just mind-boggling to go through some of that and try to digest all of it.
Mm-hmm.
But I think it's also something that
Thanks for looking at it.
That has to be happened, that has to happen is, you know, people need to know what's there, and any way you can contact them, I think, is good. And Keenan's been beating us up every week about making sure that
Thank you, Keenan.
Well, we study, we check it out, and everybody gets involved in it. So I know even if we can't get to the meetings that you guys have had, I know we're all trying to to look at it and figure out, you know, when we get asked questions, which we get asked questions all the time, because a lot of taxpayers don't look at anything but the bottom line of their tax bill. And then they come down here, and they get mad at us because, you know, the district went up $400 last year. And I was like, well, you got to look at the tax bill and see who gets what part of your tax bill. So we send them up the street to you.
Right.
When they're happy, we just keep them here.
Right. No, it's understood. We, you know, people do pay high, there is a high tax rate here in Illinois specifically, but Batavia is no is Tony can talk to you about the funding levels and from the state for education aren't what they are in other states, and we do rely very heavily on local sources for our revenues.
Does anybody else in the room have any comments? Nick?
Hi, just a financial question. Based based on this, what is the medium median value of a house when you use those numbers?
In the school district, it might not necessarily be for the city of Batavia, but in the school district, it's $350,000 this year. And so that's what all those numbers are based off of.
And then when was this done? Has there been any forecasting? Because the real estate market's going up, there should be
Yeah, I'm more worried about the 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 bond market and then construction inflation right now for our
So they balance each other out there, probably?
Man, not really.
I don't know if the market, the housing market will keep up with that, if it keeps going the way it is, and that's my thought.
Our, you know, you know, we are seeing more kids moving into town, and as you you probably well know, is our enrollment has been declining since about 2013. And it's been declining for about about 2% of our students per year, each year since since that point. Although ironically, the current class of seniors at Batavia High School is the largest class of seniors we've ever had, but every class behind them is that much smaller, and that's driven primarily by birth rates. But more and more people are moving into town. They're just not moving in at the rates that offset that decline in birth rate.
So do you know, because you're in this, the forecast was 2% decline continuing, but are you seeing an increase? Are you are you questioning that for long term, or?
For the next five years, what all we can be fairly certain about, we're anticipating that birth rate to decline, or excuse me, the the enrollment to decline 2%. We do see our enrollments at the elementary level stabilizing. And so we do think about right now as to what our current elementary enrollments are, we'll probably stay right about that level. Might go up a little bit, might go down a little bit, but for the time being, we're going to see enrollments decline because more and more of those students are leaving the middle school and the high school. And frankly, we could use the space in those schools because they're pretty, they're pretty tight there.
And when you when you look at that, Tony, do you also look at the fact like we just approved another subdivision out on Key?
We do, yeah. And we very much encourage that growth. We think it's healthy. We just don't like it all to happen at once, as it did in the 80s and the 90s and the early 2000s, it just spread out a little bit, so we don't get those heavy pockets all at once.
I'm just curious, when you're giving your presentation, you talked about replacing two schools, and you said, hopefully rebuild them there. Is there some concern that they may not have to be, they can be rebuilt there? And if so, where would they be rebuilt?
Yeah, that was one thing that I was going to add, like not hopefully, we don't have the money to go and buy more land in Batavia right now, given the what land in Batavia goes for. So we would have to build them if we were going to rebuild them. They would have to be on the current sites. We couldn't possibly afford procuring more land.
Thank you. Who's in this speak?
Abby?
I know you said it's hard to hard to say what projects would rise to the top in option B versus the full suite of projects in option C. But the the full suite, as you've got it laid out, I mean, how long would we have if we went with option B before all of option C would be necessary to somehow finance in the future?
That's a trickier question. Right now, our original hope was that we would be able to rebuild those four elementary schools as it stands, because there are clear and present needs for that to happen now. However, given construction inflation in the last year, that quite literally has eliminated a lot of our options. And so we had to prioritize what was going to happen in those spaces, also knowing that our middle school and high school need considerable work. About half of the work in that plan really involves those two schools. So our approach right now has been to say that the older schools, in particular Gustafson and Louise, are in, I wouldn't say they're in great shape, but they're in a little bit better shape than than Storm and, excuse me, I'm talking about the JB Nelson and Alice Gustafson are older, and we can we can extend those out probably about 10 years. But it would cost money for us to do that. We would have to put probably about 10 or 15 million dollars into those schools to carry them through the next 10 years. And then at that point, take a look at where we are with our enrollment in in town and where our finances are and what construction costs are at the time, and really go from there. It would probably require another referendum at that time, which is the average over the last 75-ish years in Batavia. It's about every 10 years we need to to figure out how we're going to handle financing for caring for our schools.
So I think, as Alan indicated, a lot of the problem that everybody has with anything when you're an elected official and you're looking at it, people are just going to look at what their taxes are. So the the graph was very nice in terms of showing in a couple of years, the debt falls off. Okay. And so with option A, you know, you decrease. Option B, it stays zero. And with C, 375 for that $350,000 home. So in terms of that, in the way the graph looks, how long would the 375 then be the increase? Because what a resident's going to say to me is, I don't have any kids in school right now, and my taxes go up for BPS 101 every year anyway. And now they're going to go up even more. So is there like a timeline to be able to communicate? It's going to be this amount. We're estimating 375 to get the whole kit and caboodle done for a certain amount of time. Do you kind of show how that graph falls down, goes up, falls down again?
Right. So whenever we issue bonds, we assume generally that they're going to be issued for a 20-year term. We don't necessarily issue all those bonds at the same time, because the IRS has some rules about issuing bonds and then putting that money in the bank and then making interest on it. So by law, we have to spend 80% of the proceeds of a bond within a year after they're issued. And so we would issue bonds in tranches, but each for 20 years. And so generally speaking, from the time that the referendum is passed, the time that we start issuing bonds, those would carry out for 20 years. And so roughly about 20 to 23 years would be the payback period, and that's the same in both options B and C. So it doesn't matter necessarily the volume of debt that we're issuing, but the timeframe is always going to be about 20 years from the time that it was issued.
And with option B staying zero or showing a zero increase because our current debt's going to fall off, and even though we're going to be making substantial investments and improvements in bonds, it would still just kind of level out, equal each other out for a certain amount of time.
Well, so in option C, the tax
Option B versus?
Option B and C are the same timeframes in terms of repayment. In option B, the love, the repayment, it's kind of like a car payment right now, right? Where, you know, we're paying maybe at least say we're paying $500 a month for our car, and we're going to do that for 20 years. So a pretty long time on a car. But in option B, we're paying $500. But in option C, we're paying $750 for 20 years. That's really the difference between option B and option C.
Right. I'm just saying, the way the graph looks is the way to convince at least option B is it's you're not going to notice anything other than your usual, you know, here or there increases, bumps that everybody sees all the time.
Generally, inflation. If your house is appreciating at the same rate as inflation and the EAV in town, that's what it's going to be. It would continue at that at that rate.
Along those lines, the 375 is just for this project, that's on top of the annual increase we would naturally expect?
Yes.
So we wouldn't just see 375 that that's just for this?
The first year would be 350-ish if you went with option C. And then each year it would grow as it normally does with generally inflation, depending on the value of your home.
Mark?
As everybody on council knows, and much of the district of staff, I pinch pennies. So I'm not a big fan of spending a lot of money.
As do I.
And I look at the useful life of the school, and it's it's surprising to me. I mean, you can travel all over Europe, and there's buildings that are centuries of years old. The building we're in is obviously older than any school in in town. And I just wonder, is in 50 to 70 years, is it, hey, we need to tear these down, rebuild them? What I know there was maintenance that wasn't done. And there's schools, Donald's Grove High School is very old high school, for an example. How do you keep it so that we don't have to do this again? I mean, this should, these should be 100-year-plus structures, in my opinion.
Yeah, they probably should be, ideally. There's a whole host of of factors that go into that. And I think in part, you notice that the first two schools that we would tackle first would be Storm and Louise, and those aren't the oldest. And I think that's partially an indicator of just construction standards during that time and how they were built. And so older buildings, it's true, I think, were built in much different ways that they they hold their their value over time. But one of the key factors is, is the way that we use those schools has completely changed in that timeframe, too. So that's that's a major factor. And I think the third other major factor is in Batavia, given the growth that this community has seen in the in the 80s and the 90s and in the 2000s, that we really lived off of that growth to adding on to schools so that there was enough space and there was enough classrooms so that we could actually functionally educate those kids. But in almost every case, we never touched the original core of those buildings. We just tacked on these additions. And and now those issues that we haven't been dealing with for, in many cases, decades are are coming to roost. Plus, the standards for safety, security, accessibility, and just how we educate kids, especially with special needs, have completely changed. The cost, we, most of our schools aren't sprinkled. The middle school was built in 1992. It was, it's not sprinkled, except for some new additions that were added on in the late 90s. Those standards, even in the 90s, are just completely different. ADA standards have completely changed in the last 15 years. And our teachers make do with with all these nuances, and they constantly adapt, but we, and it's not necessarily fair to make them make continue to make those adaptations in perpetuity. And I think that explains why we need to do the level of work that we need to do.
Okay, I see, Tony, you have your hand up. Go ahead.
Yes, thank you, Alan. I don't necessarily have a question, just some comments. You know, Mark, while everyone may know you're the penny pincher, I think most people know that I'm not. I recall when we first having discussions about the last major referendum that the school's had, when it was to remodel the high school, actually before that, whether they should build a new high school. But through that process, there was a lot of community support, and it was more than just the people that had kids in school. I fully support, you know, keeping our our schools up to date. And I just think, what if we weren't successful back in, was it 2006 or 2007, when the referendum ran? Where we would be now? And as I recall, shortly after the referendum passed and during construction, we were facing some really hard times after the housing crisis. But we persevered, and we made it through, and we have world-class schools. And if we don't keep doing that, we're not going to have world-class schools. I fully support the district to, you know, do do the part to educate kids. That is the most important part. And like I said before, our kids have gotten a world-class education in Batavia. That's what brings people to Batavia. That's why our property values have rebounded much faster here than many other places. And so, you know, with that, I am fully on board with, you know, staying, keep making sure we have great facilities. Thank you.
Anybody else?
I'll tack on to that. Yeah, that is, I agree with Tony. Like, I would not be here in Batavia if it wasn't for the school district. That was one of our main things we were looking at when looking for a place to live in Batavia. So maintaining our our level of education in our schools is is important to a lot of people, whether you have kids or not, because it also ties into the city's ability to generate revenue with new families moving in and with people staying in town. So that is, that is another reason why I'm glad we're having this conversation with the school district, as we talk about development around our schools and in our town to attract young families, new families, and then maintaining the people whose whose kids have left staying in town as well, so that we continue to keep lifelong Batavians in town, and then bring in more families to help build our base back up.
Yeah, that's true. I mean, I think of a lot of people my age that have had, you know, three and four-bedroom houses, and now finally, most of their kids are moving out of the house. And, you know, those houses get turned back over to somebody that has three or four kids, or two kids, or whatever, and utilizes that rather than it's just, you know, the empty nesters living in the four-bedroom house with no kids and no load on the school district.
Yeah, and that's what I'm seeing in around in my neighborhood, is a lot of original homeowners are moving to some condos or some other smaller houses in in town, and new families are moving in. And that's, I think, what we're going to start seeing. So as we start to talk about new developments in town, we need to be conscious about what it is we're, what it is we're doing, because what we do affects the school district, and what the school district does is also going to affect the city.
Abby?
And as someone that wants to, I want to age in place and just have my kids come nearer to me someday. You know, I do have to worry about pricing people out, the lifelong Batavians that want to stay in their homes, that wouldn't be able to, you know, necessarily keep affording the increase after increase after increase. You know, there's a balance there. We want, we want to have world-class facilities that attract new people, but if we're just pricing other people out of the city, then we're not really doing a great service to the people that are here and to the equity factor that we talked about earlier as well.
Mike?
I'll just add something. I just
I just think it's important that we get as many people to answer those surveys as possible.
Yes.
So whatever way we could help to do that-
And that's one of the things that we do with, for one another, is when we have those community surveys, the school district has been an excellent partner to tell all of their community, please answer the city survey. And we do the, the same thing to try to get their information out there when these community open houses are meeting and, and things like that, to try to promote one another.
And to tack on to that, I've mentioned this before on other issues. I mean, I know that you'd mentioned that there's been a lot of good feedback and, and you've had a lot of engagement. In my experience with all of these things, and I've kind of said this phrase before, is you're hearing from the unsilent minority. The silent majority is the one you're going to have to really get convinced about this because, as Alan's already said, it's all about taxes. And if you see, if they're going to see a referendum and they don't really have a lot of education about what's going on, or they don't really, they haven't had questions answered, or they just haven't had everything explained to them, they're just going to say no. And that's the majority. Because with these surveys and everything else, all you really hear from are the people who are heavily invested in what you're trying to get out there, which is really a minority compared to everybody else in the city. So that's going to be a big problem. And that's something you got, that, like everybody just said, we'll help to make sure the surveys get out and promote everything, but that's going to be real important.
Yeah, and I noticed one, on the one slide you showed with the QR code on that, also make sure that it's not just electronic responses, you know, and I don't know if it's, you know, work with the library and have a giant banner there to queue people in that are at the library all the time. Make sure you hit every one of the communities in town with the Homestead, Heritage Woods, and the places where people vote at more than 12% in the typical precinct in town. So those are the ones you have to make sure you get to.
Okay. Thank you for coming down, and we'll move on to part B. Part D. I already told Laura she's only got three minutes.
I've got three minutes. It's no problem.
Actually got six.
I tried to put one.
You can't put time when it's on things that we have to talk about.
Yeah.
Says the guy who has midnight meetings.
So this is the second three-year plan that the city has done recently. We had a 2019 to 2021 plan, and then 2020 happened. And, and so we had to sort of adjust course and kind of reimagine our three-year plan. And so in 2020, we developed this three-year plan. And it has five different areas of objectives. The first is economic vitality, transportation, infrastructure, the river, and diversity, equity, and inclusion. And everything you see here in this presentation today, because very shortly it's going to get to the point where you will not be able to read the type size. And I apologize about that. But it's an effort to have it be sort of a living document where on a quarter-by-quarter basis, we provide the community with updates on what is the current status of our activities involved with each one of the objectives. And so I'll briefly describe the objectives as they relate to economic development. We created the position of Economic Development Manager, and we have brought that person on board. Shannon Jarmus is online with us this evening, as she has some agenda items that will be presented. But the second part of that was to create an Economic Development Strategic Plan. The second objective was to actively market Batavia to new businesses. So a few years back, we were fortunate enough to create the position of Communications Manager, and so we wanted that person to work very closely with the Economic Development Manager in order to create campaigns to attract the types of development that we would like to see here in the city. The third objective was to promote opportunities for downtown redevelopment. We had hoped that we would be underway with construction of the One Washington Place project, but unfortunately, the developer decided late last year that they would not be moving forward with that project. It was surprising the number of, we had no less than five developers that actually contacted us, having seen news about that development, no longer going forward to ask about the site. And so what you'll see very soon is requests for proposals on our downtown city-owned redevelopment sites, as well as some other activity that I'll talk about. And the fourth is continuing to implement aspects of our streetscape plan. Back in 2014, the city put together quite a detailed plan of different street, streetscape changes that they wanted to make in the future. And there was an initial run to see a lot of those things accomplished, such as the Wood Earth, Houston Street, what was done on Wilson Street, all of that, you know, beautiful work that was done that I think has been part of the factor that has led to very much a revitalization of downtown Batavia. So let me share where we're currently at right now of things that I haven't shared. So with regard to that creation of an Economic Development Strategic Plan, now that Shannon is on board, we have put together a project plan for this. The initial step is going to be having stakeholder meetings with organizations like our Chamber of Commerce and our Main Street organization, of course, but also to include our other taxing body partners, business owners, residents, people from all walks of life in our community to assist us and provide information about, we're going to do a SWOT analysis of strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats as they see them. And from that, try to glean what types of objectives would be most effective in creating the economic development opportunities that are specifically appropriate for Batavia. In marketing Batavia, now that we, we actually did have a little bit of a speed bump in that we had a change in personnel in the Communication Manager position, but we are very excited that Lori Botterman has joined the city as its new Communications Manager. Lori has lived here for 20 years as well and has been a very active and involved member of our community, in addition to be an exceptionally experienced person, both from her journalism background and also her marketing background. So we're really excited about the skills that she's bringing to the table, as well as those that Shannon's bringing to the table, will combine to create some nice campaigns for the city of Batavia. In promoting downtown development, I mentioned that following the fact that we're not moving forward with One Washington Place, City Council directed staff to create some, you know, you'll, you'll see the new signs that went out on four city-owned properties that are right in the heart of downtown. In addition, in the next week or so, we are going to issue requests for proposal for redevelopment of those sites. Those sites are not for sale, they are for redevelopment. And so we don't want anyone coming to us just to offer us money to take those properties off our hands. We want to make sure that it's a perfect project that is consistent with the vision that the city council has for future redevelopment of our downtown, and that there are promises made in those redevelopment agreements that it will be accomplished within a very specific period of time. Lessons learned. And then with regard to streetscape, you know, one of the things that was suggested to enhance the look of the closed North River Street, closed for public dining, was the addition of what are called the catenary lights, or some people call them Edison lights. We've got some temporary lights up there right now, but in 2022, we're going to be setting up poles and lights that are all the way down the length of that road. So we think that that will be a, a really nice enhancement project. So the second is transportation. And the city has been pursuing what's known as a road diet for Route 31. And for those who are unfamiliar with that, it would take the four-lane roadway that has no shoulders on the side, and it would make two lanes of bidirectional traffic on either side and a lane in the middle for turning maneuvers. That center lane would also be a place of refuge for pedestrians and bicyclists who are trying to cross the road. While in the past, IDOT has not shown much favor toward road diets, in particular in our area of IDOT, because I think of the lack of problems that occurred when they did the road diet up in Geneva, they, they're sort of like a little bit of an open door to them considering this. And so this, in the second half of our meeting this evening, we have our consultant here to present the results of a feasibility study that IDOT requested the city to perform in order for them to consider whether or not they would approve a road diet for us in the future. And we're happy to report that the feasibility study came out to say a road diet is feasible. So this, this project is moving forward as well. The second objective is adding a certain number of miles of sharrows or bike lanes per year. And the third is to collaborate with the Batavia Bicycle Commission on development of an active transportation plan. While we are moving full speed ahead with the development of the active transportation plan, we've engaged a couple of wonderful consultants, the Active Transportation Alliance of Chicago, as well as Ride Illinois. And they've done a tremendous amount of community engagement at this point to collect data, to collect opinions of our residents and, and other members of our community where, that they will use to formulate recommendations on how to improve the walkability and bikeability for the city of Batavia. And so that will inform that second objective there of adding sharrows or bike lanes. I think that will become part of the recommendations that the Active Transportation Plan will come up with. So current status of these objectives, again, road diet, we'll have the results of the consultant's feasibility study tonight and, and hope to move forward with that. But on March 24th, Mayor and I had an opportunity to be in Springfield and meet with the director, the Secretary of Transportation for the State of Illinois, and presented him with a letter that we would like to move forward on this as, as soon as possible, because not only is it directly related to bikeability and walkability, it's a matter of safety in our community. And so we tried to impress upon them that we would like to see the consideration expedited for that reason. And I think I pretty much shared the updates on the sharrows, bike lanes, and active transportation plan. And the next is infrastructure. We wanted to develop an infrastructure funding policy. We had about $70 million in infrastructure projects that we had been talking about for a number of years, but no funding sources for those. We also wanted to have a discussion about our current service level expectations and the, the pressure there is with the rising costs of providing those services, and whether we want to maintain that level of service or talk about, you know, raising or lowering. And then finally, enhancing the safety of bikers and walkers in our neighborhoods. This is about traffic calming measures, and so I'll share the updates on those. With regard to the funding, great discussion here at City Council last year, and Gary Holm, our Director of Public Works, put together a great presentation that helped us to create a plan of, of all of those items that we could do, what are the things that we'll do next year? What are those things in two to five years, five to 10 years, and 10-plus years? And then prioritize those items. And then for the short term, identify the funding sources available to, in some cases it's TIF, in some cases it's general fund monies, in some cases it is the utility funds that would pay for that, and then that would be paid for through the rates. But then we also know that we've got ARPA funding that we could use for some of those expenses. So now we've got that plan for the short term. We need to come back and talk about funding sources for the long-term projects, which are part of that plan. I put that the service level expectations matter has been completed because we discussed it and decided to maintain the same, that same level. But really, it's completed in that we've committed to a policy, a, a process of talking about that every year and examining, you know, what, what cost increases we expect and how to accommodate that through, you know, what our expected revenue sources are. The traffic calming, we have not yet started, but again, we think that that project should come after the development of our active transportation plan, because again, those recommendations will inform perhaps some recommendations for what type of traffic calming measures might be effective. And then the next section is about the river, and I'm sure that most of you have heard about the conversations that have been going on. It really is a master plan for the entire corridor, but because of the possibility of availability of funding for the removal of the dam through the Illinois Department of Natural Resources, we put that as a priority to talk about first. We're, we are, we hit a bit of a speed bump on that one in that there wasn't consensus on any one of those five different alternative conceptual plans that were put out there. And so the decision was made to look at what recreational elements might be contemplated if we decide after taking the dam out that we put back some type of impoundment. So that's sort of a next step there. We're actively marketing riverfront development opportunities. And then the third element is to identify some inexpensive ways to capitalize on having a river in the heart of our downtown, right? We want to change that focus, instead of the river being something people go over or around to really connect with. And so I talked about the, the work that we're gonna, the consultant is kind of, going to come up with an analysis of those recreational elements. Also, we have a project that, marketing the riverfront for development, really marketing our whole downtown for development. We're hiring a consultant to come in and update our downtown plan. And then with regard to the river engagement activities, we're going to resume an annual river cleanup, and those usually happen in May, so we'll make sure to get the word out to the school district, because we love having, if you guys want to participate or if families want to participate in that, that's a lot of fun. And then lastly is the Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Plan. And things we've done in this regard is the city made Juneteenth, one of our paid holidays for employees. We had the opportunity, for the very first time, to promote one of our female members of the Batavia Police Department to managerial position. Very proud of that. And then the city has just kicked off putting together a Workplace DEI Committee that we hope to have our first meeting here in the second quarter. So that's the city's strategic plan, and I'm sorry that the verbiage there is so small, but if you go to the city's homepage, you'll see the strategic plan page, and you can take a closer look at this document and just, you know, see what our journey has been and where we've yet to go. And I'd be happy to answer any questions if anybody has any.
I don't know if you could read it from back there, but they had to leave.
Oh, yeah, we got him. Thanks.
Yeah.
What's that?
We had, we had somebody that left from the school district.
Oh, okay. No worries.
I have a question that's not specifically related to any of the specific priorities, but I am interested in your experience, because there's a lot of experience in this room at different levels of experience. But, you know, we just made our presentation, Lisa did a nice job, and we're dealing with something that has a lot of complexity. And I think Chris said, you know, you have to reach the silent majority. And you just went through, you know, One West Washington and now the riverfront, very complex, impacts all of us, just some of the lessons that you've learned going through that process. I know it's never easy, but if there's any mistakes you made or any lessons that were learned that you could share with us, it would be appreciated.
Well, that's why I mentioned the whole survey thing and making sure you really, really got to get the word out, and you got to make sure people are educated and know really what's going on. And sometimes it's, I mean, you know, there was a, a discussion about how you can go to the website and there's just, like Alan said, there's just hours of stuff to look at. You got to try to also maybe, I just hope you dumb it down, but CliffNote version, you know?
Which is what you got on there.
CliffNote version, pictures, graphs, you know, things that are easily eye-catching and, you know, maybe do like, be like a 10-minute nutshell thing. People can go in and say, okay, now I know what's going on. You know, you got to, and then you can have links on there. Click this link and you can go get the full explanation, you know, if people want to do that. But I'll tell you that, that majority, they're not going to click on that big link anyway. They're just going to want to see real quick, what am I voting about, what's going- They're just gonna want to see real quick, what am I voting about, what's going on? Give it to me so I can see how it's gonna affect me, you know? And then it's, it's gonna be real hard, but just making sure that everybody tries to see this survey. I mean, it doesn't take the, the little postcard that comes in the mail with all the other political flyers that are coming right now, chuck them in recycling, you know? I mean, that's just the tough part. That's tough for, it was tough for us with the river thing. That's why I think there was a mention, maybe make sure you even have something up at the library, um, because I'm sure they'll be helpful about that, about people going in and, you know, you can just, they can fill out things there too. The community engagements have been good, Keenan's been promoting those. And maybe promote, um, if you guys can do some type of editing, just like highlight reels of, you know, people can watch instead of the whole meeting, the, the points you guys really want to get across that you think are important for each and every one of those options. Because some people are gonna say, oh, all you want to do is promote option C. You just gotta, you gotta lay out each and every option equally and fairly so everybody can, you know, feel like they're not being
Steered.
Forced, steamrolled into saying, this is the school board, of course they want everything. You know, you have to, that's the way to, that's what, that's my suggestion anyway.
Thank you.
I'll add to that. One of the lessons I learned, the mayor is, uh, frequently talks about this. We went through it with one Washington, and that was a seven-seven tie going through, you know, just in the council, let alone referendum. We had our, you know, we each had our own opinions and the community had their own opinions. But in the, at the end of the day, um, he would reiterate, you know, this is a great community, and whether they're here in, in five years, 10 years, we're still gonna be Batavia. And whether they're not here, we're still gonna be Batavia. You guys, and, and one thing that we have unique in this community is that, um, and I hear horror stories in other municipalities, there is mutual respect, not, not only among the, the city council, but the, the other governmental bodies. You know, we, we are proud of our school district and happy to work with you guys. I'm glad you're here, and we feel the same. We're doing the same thing with the park district for the, um, for the river and the dam. And we might have different opinions, we might ask hard questions and, and come from different angles, but at the end of the day, whatever happens, we're still beating Batavia. And it's a unique community, one to be proud of, and it's, it's gonna live on. And don't, don't get too staunch in your, your, your own goal and objective. Listen to the community and trust that in the end, it's all gonna work out.
I have one, too. I, I haven't participated in any, you know, referendum-level projects like you're going, you're going into, but the organization I work for has at different county levels. And so, and they never go into a single referendum without doing polling data first. And I think the survey is great, but you will still have some self-selection bias. So the random polling that they would go into it with would not only give them the opt, you know, to know which option was more favorable among the community, but which messaging, which messages were more favorable, which resonated most. And I know that's an investment, so it was $9 million in, in rebuilding things. So that's always, that's always my go-to because they, they've never lost a referendum. They're 14 for 14, so, but they also didn't go to referendums they knew they were gonna fail. So that's my two cents.
I'll just say the times that I've spent going through the different things that we've gone through at city level have been listen to everything and take 90% of it with a grain of salt. Because, you know, the ones that are usually the loudest are the least representative of, of what's out there, especially lately with everybody's favorite, whatever media platform you want to be on. Anybody else?
The only thing I'm gonna add about what you presented, in fact, is just in the interest of full disclosure, not to be the pariah, I think I'm the only person in the school district that doesn't actually live in Batavia. So I'm out in Mill Creek, so I'll hop, skip, and a jump away, but I appreciate everything Batavia and the council and the management and the staff have done to kind of really bring it up. I mean, while my kids go to Batavia, I'm in Geneva School District, or Public Library, and blah, 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 blah. I mean, as much as I can, you know, consider myself a Batavian as much as I do because my kids go to school here, I spend more time, 90% of my friends do live in here, so I appreciate everything you guys have done to kind of keep it up and keep things moving forward, particularly in the past kind of 10 years. I've lived here since about 2005, and I've really kind of seen a concerted effort, and I, I appreciate it, so.
Yeah, I'll say that too. I'll, I'll second that. It's not an easy time to be in public office right now, so, um, you know, I'm sure everyone in this room's had difficult days, but I do appreciate the service that all of you have given the city, so thank you.
All right. Well, thank you guys for coming down and thanks for listening and asking and talking about everything. I think this is good, and this is one of the things that probably for at least the last decade, we've really tried to do these type of meetings with the school district and with the park district and with the library. We're all getting somebody's tax money, we're all spending somebody's tax money, and I think it's good that we all know what's going on with the other entities to operate in a vacuum, and a town this small to me is crazy. And as Nick said, we know a lot of representatives from other cities that have just told us horror stories. Every year when we go down to Springfield and we're there for legislative work and to meet people and be, we always hear horror stories. And some of the stuff we hear is like, you know, that they can't, they don't even talk to each other, whether, you know, it's somebody from the school district or the library or whatever, they never have communications. And I think that to me, one, that's crazy. One of the things that I've been involved in with, for almost the entire time I've been on the council is BATV. And some of the fights that I had from people that were on the council with me about, you know, televising meetings and televising committee meetings. And, you know, ran into a local mayor and go into who it was at the time when we started to do that here. I don't want a camera in my chambers, I don't want them there when we're having a committee meeting, and it's, you know, part of this is you're working for the public and it should be that you, whatever you're doing, unless it's, you know, legal or personnel, needs to be out in the public eye, and people need to be able to see that and refer to that. Sometimes we need to go back and look at it and see, what did we actually say three years ago about something? So I think it's really good that we've done that, and I think that that's something that more than anything, I think that's something we should all be proud of, that we have all our meetings televised, that those are out there for people to see, because not everybody can get to these meetings. Not everybody's schedule allows that, their daily lives, everything is different. And especially through COVID, we all realized how important that was to be able to communicate. As much as I detest some of these meetings when I got half the people in the room and half the people not here, and how it is to try to control and run that meeting when you're trying to look up at a screen and see who wants to talk, or who isn't talking, or whatever is going on. I, I think it's really important that we maintain that with the community because I think every time something goes wrong, it's because people don't know what's happening. And, you know, to have that information out there every week, whether it's watching it live or watching it in a replay, I think is really important for this community to know that what we're doing is not backroom deals, it's not, you know, somebody's paying off somebody else to get something done. It's we're there to try to do what we think is right for this community, and from every angle, whether it's library, school district, park district, the city, we're all there and we're all out in the open so everybody can see it. So I think that that's a really good thing, and I'm glad that you guys are involved in that, and we're all making sure everybody sees what happens. And that's all. I don't know if you guys are going to close your meeting?
Um, we were gonna close.
Okay.
And then Kena motioned to adjourn the school board portion of this agenda.
Second.
If by law, if by law, on favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
The board portion is adjourned. Thank you so much for inviting us.
Thank you. Thanks for coming down.
Good conversation.
Take a little recess here while everybody changes. Can I all stretch out for? We will start on item eight.
Oh, I got my steps. Yes, congrats.
Wow. We'll not start with your steps. We'll start with number, item number eight, which is Ordinance 22-20, amending Ordinance 2039 to eliminate a reversion clause for the southwest corner of Fabian Parkway and Kirk Road. And I'll see if I can get that to come back up. If it will load. Actually, Scott's here, and probably do that before I get this back up here.
Al, this is Joel.
Scott's on vacation.
I'm looking at the memo here. Sorry, Joel.
It's okay. In 2020, the city council approved 20-39 to rezon the 37-acre property at the southwest corner of Kirk Road and Fabian Parkway. This rezoning was from GC General Commercial to the GI General Industrial District. This was done speculatively to attract a particular manufacturer. The rezoning from Ordinance 20-39 was approved with a reversion clause to have the property go back to general commercial zoning if that particular manufacturer did not secure development entitlements by July 6th of 2022. The opportunity for that manufacturer has passed, but the property owner has informed the city of his receiving continued interest in industrial use for the, for the site. The property owner is seeking for a permanent GI General Industrial zoning designation for the property. The city attorney has determined that the reversion clause in 20, Ordinance 20-39, leaves the property in a, essentially a pending zoning state. This allows the city council to approve Ordinance 22-20, which is in front of you this evening, to amend Ordinance 20-39 to remove the reversion clause and make the GI District permanent for the property. Approval of Ordinance 20-22 on or before July 5th would make the GI District a permanent zoning classification for the property. Not approving Ordinance 22-20 or taking no action by July 5th would leave the reversion clause in Ordinance 20-39 effective, and the property would then automatically revert to the GC General Commercial District on July 6th. Staff feels the GI District continues to be appropriate for this location and recommends the city council approve Ordinance 22-20 as presented.
Okay, does anybody have any questions on that?
I'm just curious, the property across the street, that's like the farm field, what is that?
It's owned by Aldi.
Okay.
You know, we're not really sure whether or not that's gonna be a future expansion space for them, or if they're just holding it to resell it. No clue. And, and I don't think that that's something that, to me, really impacts this a lot. I, I know we had talked when we originally did this that that was whether or not we wanted to change that to industrial on that from commercial to try to attract whatever we're gonna do over there, because there's so much that has been built around there and has sold so well, all the spec buildings and everything that have gone up over there. I think we just leave it as, you know, change this to leave it as it is. I mean, somebody comes in with a great development and wants to change it, and the property owner wants to sell the property to them, we could change it then if we had to. But I think for the attractiveness of it to try to develop it now, it has to stay with the industrial.
I was just curious. I'm not, you know, thinking anything negative about it, just wasn't sure.
I mean, if you want to buy a, if you want to build a hotel over there or something, you can go talk to Aldi and see if they'll sell you the property.
No, because it's just interesting, the, the land that's there, because you have some industrial, but then you have like the restaurant and the hotel and.
I remember that's Geneva on that side.
Well, correct, but you look at that four, four corners area.
Yeah.
Are you saying it's a little dicey over there?
No, it's just an interesting, you know, I just want something built there. But I wasn't sure if there was like thought about the future plan for that corner owned by Aldi, but if no thought is, then just look at it as a plain field.
Does anybody else have any questions or comments? Okay, if not, I will make the motion that we recommend to council, Ordinance 22-20, amending Ordinance 2039 to eliminate a reversion clause for the southwest corner of Fabian Parkway and Kirk Road, 1501 North Kirk Road. Second. Motion by Wolf, second by Sulfah. Roll call, please.
Wolf?
Aye.
Baron?
Aye.
Lehman?
Aye.
Agassi?
Aye.
Malley?
Aye.
Ewer?
Aye.
Theron?
Aye.
Vogelsinger? Miller?
Aye.
Brizotto?
Aye.
Beck?
Aye.
Connelly? Chancet? And Sulfah?
Aye.
Motion carried 11 to 0.
All right, thank you. Move on to item number nine, which is Ordinance 22-23, establishing special service area number 67 for Kirkland Chase Phase III subdivision at Wind Energy Pass and Wagner Road. This is another one of our backup SSAs that would go into effect if the homeowners association does not take care of its obligations to maintain common facilities and shared driveways, stormwater management areas. There would be another public hearing that would be required to activate the SSA if we were to use it or had to put it into effect. So to begin with, it would go in as an initial tax rate levy of $0.00. So like a lot of the other backups that we've done, they go in with no, no cost on them at this point. Nick?
Like you say, we've, we've done this a lot. Do we have any idea how many more are lots or subdivisions are out there without a backup SSA that we should be doing this?
Joel, do you have any idea on that?
Uh, no. Sometimes we come across them in doing particular research on a property, but I don't know of, I know, we don't have a list of those.
They're like the, the little islands that we're going, it's just something that we come across and do.
Right, and I think the, the main thing with these are is that we know when we start these subdivisions or we start these developments, that we put these in, into the agreements so that we start them up when they get to certain phases or certain portions of it done, so that we, we do these, so that way in the event that the homeowners association dissolves or doesn't take care of the obligations, we, as the city, have a way to do that without making everybody in the city pay for it. And that's really the reality of why we do these. Okay, no other questions or comments? I'll make the motion that we recommend to council, Ordinance 22-23, establishing special service area number 67, Kirkland Chase Phase III subdivision at Wind Energy Pass and Wagner Road. Second. Motion by Wolf, second by Sulfah. Roll call, please.
Wolf?
Aye.
Baron?
Aye.
Lehman?
Aye.
Agassi?
Aye.
Malley?
Aye.
Ewer?
Aye.
Theron?
Aye.
Vogelsinger? Miller?
Aye.
Brizotto?
Aye.
Beck?
Aye.
Connelly? Chancet? And Sulfah?
Aye.
Motion carried 11 to 0.
Okay, thank you. And for tonight's marquee event, a discussion on the draft feasibility study recommendation report for Batavia Avenue, road diet conversion. Good evening, Rohat.
Good evening. So this is the marquee event, as you said, of the night. As, as you guys all know, that you have approved trans system to perform a road diet feasibility, feasibility study late last year. After the approval, we actually met with city, sorry, met with IDOT to find out what they really want to see in that feasibility study. They indicated that they would like to see that, that if we proceed with the road diet conversion, then that will have minimum impact or no impact to the traffic that exists today and that will exist in 2050. Because they- out what they really want to see in that feasibility study. They indicated that they would like to see that, that if we proceed with the road diet conversion, then that will have minimum impact or no impact to the traffic that exists today and that will exist in 2050. Because they wanted to keep the door open, that if there is a huge traffic growth, then they will be able to convert back. So it could be a temporary road diet for 20 years, 30 years, you know, and then if traffic grows to a level, then they will convert back to full lane, or if the road gets reconstructed, a lot of other things. So what has happened since then is the Trans System mostly looked at two different aspects. One is the traffic safety. So they gathered all the accidents that happened between 2016 to 2020. Typically, IDOT wants to look at five years of accident data. And then most of the accidents that happen along this corridor are rear end accidents. So if you're coming to the signal, you know, somebody slammed the brake, you go and hit their back, those are the rear end accident, we call, or turning accident. So if somebody's trying to turn into, let's say McKee Street from 31, you know, you do, somebody's going southbound on 31, they hit them. So those are the type of accidents. So the analysis shows that if we convert it to a road diet, which means one lane in each direction with a bidirectional lane, we will be able to reduce those type of accidents, the rear end and the turning accidents. The other thing, the consultant looked at it, and I should mention that Matt from Trans System is here to help us answer any questions or inquiries that you will have. Another thing that they looked at is the traffic operations data, that if we convert it to a three lane configuration, then how is the traffic going to operate? And they looked at two different scenarios, and that was kind of dictated by IDOT, because they know that we have traffic signal at Wilson and Main. So they wanted us to look at two different alternatives. One is if we do it all, all the way three lane configuration from Fabian to Musart, then how is the traffic going to operate through these two traffic signals, especially between Wilson and Main? And the other alternative was, if we keep it as it is, from Wilson to Main, with the true traffic signal and convert rest of it. So from Wilson to north and Main to the south, to three lane configuration, how is it going to happen? So alternative one, which is the three lane all throughout, shows that the traffic will queue up at the traffic signal, because now all of a sudden, you are bringing two lanes of traffic into one lane. It will queue up, so there will be a longer queue for traffic to go through those signals. To give them more green time, you will have to take away some green time from the Wilson and Main Street. That means those vehicles will experience no longer delays. So, and obviously, there will be people turning to the left, they will be blocking people up, so there will be some complexity and more delays that will be experienced with that three lane configuration throughout. But if we keep it as it is, it shows that it will not impact the traffic operation that much. If we convert just from Wilson to north, means Fabian to three lane configuration, and from Main Street to the south to a three lane configuration. So that's the study that shows, we feel very confident that if we present this data to IDOT, and we had a meeting this morning with Matt, IDOT is going through this almost similar exercise with other cities and municipalities who are also pushing to convert some of their state route to road diet, because they have, you know, a narrow street within their jurisdiction too, where it's like nine feet lanes, you know, and people just don't feel comfortable driving through those. It seems like IDOT is open to this idea, and they are more receptive to it at this time. So timing wise, it's pretty good timing for us. What we are actually bringing to you is that you don't have to take any action, kind of discuss it, and give us a little bit of guidance on which alternative you will prefer. Most likely, we'll go back and finalize the report, which that alternative that the city council will prefer, and then present it to IDOT for approval. So once they are okay with it, we'll proceed with it. It's a shorter version of preliminary engineering, because we are not really doing, you know, taking out any pavement or curb or anything like that. So it's a shorter version of preliminary engineering, which can take like six to nine months, and then design engineering, again, pretty minimum, another six to nine months, and then go into construction in 2024. That's all. Yeah, I think I have that. So with that, I will open up for any question, discussion, Gary, myself, and Matt. Matt, you want to actually add anything to it? Sorry.
We're high nailed it, so I'm definitely here answering questions that the council has tonight, and to support it more.
Chris?
I just have some questions about the configuration, how it's going to work. Because if you're looking at the road diet going north into Geneva, when you cross Fabian Parkway, it takes quite some time, actually all the way until you get up to Houghton Mifflin, for it to narrow down. So what would the configuration be? Because you don't want it to be too quick there, going south, to cause the bottlenecks to narrow it down to the three lane diet. And then when's it going to open back up then, to get towards Wilson in terms of layout? And then another question is, what was the study, what did the study show? Was it really necessary to have the road diet all the way to Musart Road, and then open it back up again? I mean, how would that all work? Where would the hourglass figure, so to speak?
So I can try to answer the second question. First question, Matt has to take it. Musart Road, we went all the way there, because IDOT likes to do project FAU route, they call it FAU route, FAU route. Musart Road is the logical FAU route after the city limit, so that's why they went to that. Otherwise, you have to go like all the way down south to North Aurora. So they have road designation, it's called federal accessible, I don't remember what is FAU stands for. Federal accessible. Federal aid urban. So they have named some routes, so whenever you do a project, you have to go from one of their routes to another route. Typically, that's how the designation comes.
Can you come up?
Yeah, hey Matt.
You can sit up here and just use a mic, if that's easier. We got tables set up tonight, so.
Ironically, you press the mute button to turn it on.
It might already be on.
It is on.
Sounds like a hot mic. Yep, it's on.
It's on.
So yeah, the meeting that, well, good evening, Matthew Baldwin, I work for Trans Systems, we are the consultant that have been leading the study for the road diet for Illinois 31. In the meeting that Rahat referenced, we did talk to IDOT, and they asked for us to extend the study to those limits. They look for logical termini. As Rahat was describing, they're looking for an intersection that makes sense to terminate the project, so it doesn't just end in the middle of a segment. It doesn't mean necessarily that the improvements would extend all the way to that intersection. They can transition between there and Millview, for example. We'd study where those transitions and tapers make sense, for example. To answer the other question in terms of how would it taper, there are specific criteria in terms of how to complete a lane drop or a transition of lane through a signalized intersection. It's all based on speed. So from what I remember, the lane drop length would be about 540 feet, based on the speed at Fabian intersection. It extends about 500 to 600 feet past the stop bar. So you're looking about 1,000 feet beyond the stop bar of Fabian intersection before you transition down to the three lane section.
So that seems to be considerably less than the way it is going north.
Yeah, and they have, the roadway is changing widths there too, so they have a bunch of different elements happening at the same time. So they're fighting a couple of different things. We have a pretty consistent typical section of about 40 feet, until we get to the downtown signalized intersections that we're.
And I guess then my concern is just that, I mean, I know the road diet is to try to create.
You don't want to always be in a state of flux.
Yeah.
You want that consistent, and there's enough room. And at the same time too, those tapers are critical to make sure that they can happen before intersections where you're going to have multiple decision points. So that's all going to be evaluated in terms of where those tapers occur and how to implement them.
That's why I was just thinking that, I mean, I'm sure it's above my pay grade for the engineering and the statistics on that, but in terms of having it taper down too quickly, I just see that as being a whole big problem of.
That could definitely create a bottleneck.
You know, I mean, to try to beat the slow driver that they see right to the left and right of them.
Why don't you point to Laura?
Because she's safe, because she's safe. No, I mean, that's such a concern, and then I also just was wondering why we had to go all the way to Musart Road, it seems like overkill, but I guess you explain that.
Yeah, just part of the study, and really we're looking through Millview, and we could start the taper after that, if we determine that that's what makes the most sense for the study too. At some point, we're likely engaged in North Aurora too, and as part of, as the phase one progresses as a stakeholder, since that's in their jurisdiction as well. So in terms of the tapers, there's also a project going on that the county's leading at Illinois 31 and Fabian as well. So we'll coordinate with them eventually. The initial phase of this study was just to prove that it is feasible, practical, and is worth moving forward in IDOT's eyes. A lot of the 2040 projections that used to be used to determine roadway planning, so the 10-year model, the previous, we're working through the 2050 model, as Rahat mentioned, were very conservative from a traffic projection standpoint. So when we even went into that meeting, a lot of the thought process was that those projections might be 20-plus thousand cars on Illinois 31 for the timeline that you designed this corridor improvement for. We're seeing it's closer to 16,000 to 17,000, which you'll see in our study. And that's more in that sweet spot where a road diet is actually practical or feasible too. 20,000 is really the threshold.
And then for the tapering, when you're going towards Wilson, because then you're going to keep it open as four lanes for that very short amount of time between Wilson and Main, right? I mean, where's the tapering going to happen there? Is it going to happen right there at Houston? It's just, I'm just.
That's one of the options.
Yeah, I'm just.
Sure, so ideally, what we would do is look at a pavement marking strategy, in my mind, we haven't looked at that as closely, but we're also going to evaluate the pedestrian accommodations, a lot of the discussion early on. And we didn't jump into a full phase one, spend all the money of the study, come back and want to tell you guys that it didn't work. That was really our concern. So let's look at the traffic and safety operations, make sure it can at least work, so it's sellable to IDOT, and then figure out some of these more detailed elements in the second phase of this study. And so ideally, what would happen is that I would think that we'd carry that median turn lane down through Houston, because right now it tapers on abruptly, and there's nowhere to really turn in the southbound direction for leftbound drivers. If we can maintain that third lane, that would make sense from continuity standpoint, and start to taper in the outside, we could use pavement marking and other strategies, I think, to implement those tapers without changing curb lines and things like that.
I think a major point is that we did find out it is feasible, and as far as alternate two, alternate two, I don't even think that that is an option. That defeats what we're really doing this for, to have four lanes in our downtown.
Mark?
Yeah, I want to go three lanes all the way through, that I just think it, I think once you start to, to your point, Chris, is that now you start messing with tapers in the area of town where people are going to be walking the most, and it's like, and people fighting over, hey, I want to get to that before it tapers down, and now you have races around Wilson and Main, as people are trying to race to get to ahead of all the other cars. So I'm curious with the studies, and it's like the stacking up of cars, because I know when I drive through town, and I'm coming up, and I'm coming up on, like if I'm headed out to maybe Randall and Main, or something like that, the logical thing is for me to go down 31 and turn right on Main, and I get to Randall. But if I'm coming up to that intersection at Wilson, and I see it's a red light, well, then I dive down Houston. Does, do you do studies to understand how people are really going through these intersections? Because I might turn at Wilson or Houston to get to the same location, because I see that stacking up.
Sure. That's like another level on top of the study that we completed. There's, they use cell phone data now to track where, and take pings every, I think it's a minute or two minutes, and then they go back and map, and they create heat maps of where people go through a certain area, so that you can see diverted traffic. We actually have another project that's doing exactly that. Why improve an intersection, provide all this turn lane capacity, if we don't even know what the real problem is, right? Because if people are taking that exact route to avoid that intersection, why wouldn't we add more capacity, so we could actually get people to go through the intersections that they're supposed to, based on it being an arterial and all these other factors? We did not complete that element in this study, but what is an interesting outcome, when we coordinated with CMAP, who's the planning agency, and they provide those projections, because they have the models for the traffic. And like I said, those earlier projections were overly conservative, which led to a lot of the planning and overbuild of roadways, for example. They show, if there's a road diet implemented, you actually may divert more traffic than what we showed in this study. So what I would say to that is, for this study, it's the very conservative approach. We took it as if it stayed four lanes of traffic out to 2050, which is based on the growth, took it from 13,000 cars it's at right now to 16,000, and then modeled 16,000 cars through the corridor to see what those impacts are, instead of taking the lesser of it, if it becomes a three lane road diet. So there were some considerations built into it, just not as detailed as what you're referencing.
Okay, no, yeah, I mean, in that case, if you're basing it on traffic that is 20-plus percent higher than what we have right now, I'm even more comfortable saying, let's just do a three lanes all the way through, just because it's going to create a much safer downtown. It drives, we mentioned this before, maybe we have different parking configurations along 31, diagonal parking, that then allows more people to park right in front of the stores that we want them to, instead of having to go off into the side streets. I think it walkability helps, bikability helps. I think about the possibility, as I was driving through there today, at Wilson and 31, the northeast corner, where, you know, pedestrians are always afraid to cross there, that now the potential to pull that curb out further, maybe, to create more visibility, so that they're not hidden behind a building, just those types of things. So that's what I'm in favor of.
So if I may add, so one of the things that we have heard from school district is that at 2:40, 2:50, if you are traveling on Wilson Street, when the schools are out, there is a long queue. We have recently worked with a consultant, they are actually IDOT consultant, we just brought up the issues to them, and they have, were able to adjust traffic signal to a level where now, it used to take nine minutes from, let's say, Wilson to all the way, or if you want to say school to all the way to Red Ann, now it's down to like five minutes to six minutes. So that may be unintended consequences if we make a three lane configuration through the downtown, because now you will have long queue on 31 and long queue on both Wilson. So buses and kids, you know, they will probably take, rather than taking one traffic signal or two cycle, they might take three or four, just pointing it out.
So I don't want to engineer for 150 days a year, an hour a day of those 150 days. I mean, you're right, right now, we don't engineer for highest traffic capacity, right? That's not what we're supposed to do, so I don't think we should do that.
So that was one of my concerns, though, is if we're going to go down just three lanes on 31, I mean, I think one of the biggest complaints you hear people on good old social media is trying to get across town, why don't we have a second bridge? So are we going to, are we going to like create a complete anarchy with having, being unable to get across town two times a day, because it's a three lane road on Route 31?
No.
It's reality and perception.
You know.
I spent a lot of time going back and forth across the river in the last two years, and no matter what you do, it's never been longer than 11 minutes to get from basically the middle school to my house, which is the high school to the middle school, in rough terms.
And they don't turn, the students don't turn off of 31 onto Wilson. They take, they either go down to Houston, or they take the road right before that by the library.
First Street.
Main Street.
Because when I take, when I pick up my high schooler and go down 31 and turn on Wilson, I get yelled at. Why are you going this way? This isn't the way to go. This is slower. You're going to be stuck behind all the traffic.
I yell at my husband for doing the same thing. I got yelled at. You're not doing it right, Mom. This isn't the way the cool kids go.
I think of even getting to council meetings, virtually never do I come down 31. I always come down Lincoln Street, and then I can cross at Houston, because there's no light. I never get stuck in waiting for a queue or anything else to get through there. I just go across.
I just go across the road. I'm always at a stop sign, or I'm going across, you know, without a stoplight.
We have a grid, so you've got options. It's supposed to use traffic to other places. I know that we want to engineer them to go into certain materials, but the grid was for that, when traffic wasn't at this.
Well, and every, and every time we've changed anything downtown, whether it's light timing, or having, parking on one side of a street, or a bike lane, or bump outs, or anything else, traffic has always adapted to that. It's always, you get beat up, yelled at for six months, and people, why did you do that? And then as the traffic patterns change and they go different ways, it just, that question and those comments go away. Yeah?
A couple of just notes as I'm hearing all this and talking about it. So, in Geneva, at Third Street and 31, they do have the hourglass, or whatever you want to call it, where it does come back out to four lanes and then come back in, right, further north on 31?
There's a lane drop there.
Yeah, and it seems to work really well. Like, I don't even think about it as I enter that intersection, right there at the, was it the courthouse? No, I don't even know. But the governmental building there, you know, you just, you just do it. You don't even think like, oh, now it's these many lanes, and now it comes back, you know? So, I do see how that could happen without it really impacting that much downtown. Especially because as we're talking about this, I'm also thinking about southbound 25 at Fabian, and how that line does queue significantly during high-traffic patterns. And so, that's what we would probably be seeing in downtown Batavia with a very long line that sits in front of Mark's house on the west side of, you know, 31, waiting to get through downtown. So, I mean, that's just something we have to think about, and as Mark said, then are we okay with people diverting through our neighborhoods to get away? Because when you're on 25 coming southbound, there's nowhere to divert. You're stuck. But if you're in Batavia, you're now going to be turning off on all the little side streets to get around this now very long line, waiting to get through our two traffic signals through. That's just something that we need to consider, I think. And then also, forgive me if I missed it anywhere, but is pedestrian and biking, traffic being considered in any of this with this road diet?
So, not in the first, can I speak to your first point real quick?
Yeah.
Just because we do kind of have a gauge for what that would look like. So, if there's only one through lane in each direction heading southbound, I believe it's during the PMP, it's going to go from about a 500-foot queue in the existing condition to about 1,000 feet. So, you would potentially have blockage at Houston that we would have to navigate. And, you know, right now, it's numbers, because we don't know what all the ramifications are in terms of when we look at the planning aspects of it, too. But it might start to get to a point where it affects where those pedestrian crossings are as well, and then we're showing queues that back past McKee or some of these other elements that we're actually trying to solve as part of this study, too. That's just, so I would say we, maybe it's best to just keep an open mind and see what kind of creative ways we can try and address some of these challenges that we are identifying, because I think that's what this is. Let's identify our concerns or challenges, that we can then go and carry through over into the more formal Phase One study. We're going to engage the stakeholders, the council residents during this next phase as well, to garner their concerns, too. In terms of the pedestrian, that's going to be a critical aspect of it, with being a state route. IDOT has complete streets policy, and so with the conversion like this, that will be a critical importance to them as well as the city. So, I mean, that was one of the main items that Rahab identified from the early part. Let's, let's find some ways to not make this a barrier to pedestrians and bicyclists as well. So, but that's the next stage of the study.
So, even on 31 itself, will there be more availability for pedestrians and bikes? Because that would be like why I would really support the road diet all the way through down to Mooseheart, was because right now, everybody south of Main Street has no way to navigate really into town easily.
The answer is potentially. So, like, I can use, we haven't taken it this far yet, but I can use the other project that Rahab referred to, we're working on right now. It's in North Chicago, almost the exact same roadway footprint, except that they have curbed the entire length. It's a 40-foot road wide, 40-foot wide roadway, and they're repurposing it to have four-foot shoulders, which are going to operate as unmarked bike lanes in order to meet the minimum requirements of complete streets. And so, with this being approximately a 40-foot roadway, I envision probably a similar solution in typical section that we're using on that project.
And where there are crosswalks, Matt, also, the center lane will act as a place of refuge for pedestrians and bicyclists who are crossing the road, and that's a really important safety aspect as well.
And I also have a new policy that they've rolled down the last couple of years for unmarked crossings, like, the city has multiple through this corridor. And so, those are evaluated based on traffic volumes, speeds, number of lanes that pedestrians have to cross. And so, that'll be one of the tools that we use in the next phase to determine what's the appropriate. There's all kinds of speeds through the corridor, too, right? We have as low as 30, and we have as high as 45. So, there's different segments of the corridor that have different personality from a traffic and operations and safety perspective, too. So, it's not really a one-size-fits-all corridor, because it's so long and has so many different conditions.
I'd be happy if we could change it to one speed from terminus to terminus.
Because right now, it's 45 the whole way.
What?
Because right now, it's 45 the whole way.
I don't know what you're driving, but I'm not going 45.
On the way I'm driving, the way I am observing.
Yeah. There's times I realize I've been going that fast, and it's kind of scary.
Question, I know we haven't gotten in the design phase yet, but are there restrictions on going from a road diet to allowing for right turn lanes, like at 31 or Fabian?
No, just because of road diet, you can still have auxiliary turn lanes as part of that. So, we're talking about kind of the core footprint of the through lanes, and then there could still be auxiliary turn lanes as well. So, when we modeled the three-lane section, we included a dedicated auxiliary, southbound right turn lane at Wilson Street as part of modeling, because we didn't want to just have, you know, empty, unutilized space as part of that. So, that was part of the model in order to facilitate what would be a primary southbound right turn movement. That was it. The goals would be to best use the footprint of the roadway that we have right now. One of the reasons that IDOT was open to the road diet during that meeting was, well, worst-case scenario, if it doesn't work in 10 years, or there's this traffic growth that we don't necessarily see, we can convert it back with easy pavement striping exercise back to the four lanes it currently has right now. So, that's actually one of the things working in the city's favor with the current regime over at IDOT that they're open to. While if it doesn't work, worst-case scenario is we end up back where we're at with a little bit of.
They're nimble. It's our mantra.
I've never heard IDOT nimble mentioned in the same day, let alone the same sentence.
But, Matt, I think that last point is important, because if there's, those of us that are nervous about it being three lanes all the way through town, it's going to be a lot easier to say, eh, that didn't work, because it's causing such large traffic backups and restripe it, than to say, oh, I really wish we had gone to three lanes all the way through town.
Right.
And now have to go back and get that approval. I think it's easier to reverse it than it is to try and get approval again, to shrink it more, and have to go through all the engineering and everything. I think it would be a lot easier if it, hey, it doesn't work, we have to reverse.
And I think, and these are just something I'm not clear about, in terms of if we're only going to restripe, what is a very wide roadway at Wilson and 31, for example? From a pedestrian standpoint or Houston, it's so hard to cross, because there's so much distance to get across, and so unsafe when you're navigating so many lanes of traffic coming at you, and if there's a right-hand turn lane, and this, this, and this. So, if we're not able to do any traffic calming or any improvements to create bump outs, like you were mentioning, tighter corners, so that, that traffic has to go slower around those corners, you know, shorten up that distance for pedestrians and cyclists to get across, I mean, what, I'll be interested to know when we get to that phase, what our options will be.
Sure.
Because that's a, we're trying to improve level of service across all modes, not just.
Right.
Shuffle cars.
Sure. And there's, you're right, so is it going to be a, we're not going to just focus on the operations and vehicular safety, as you talk about that. The pedestrians is going to be just an important aspect of the study. Laura mentioned earlier, you're going to have those refuge locations.
Are they islands, or you're just standing?
No, not islands, just physically marked. It could be islands, but I'm not going to come out here and promote islands at the council meeting. Let's see what, what kind of feedback we get. But there, it's going to be a minimum 10-foot space. On the other project that I referenced, the typical section ended up being four feet on the outside, 11-foot lanes, 10-foot median for turning, for bidirectional turning. At a minimum, with having that refuge space out there, and as long as it's not a dedicated left turn lane, too, because we don't want to have someone standing in the middle of a turn lane, we'd be looking at locations, especially with, it actually kind of works in the city's favor. A lot of the east side doesn't have a lot of roadway, so it's not a lot of four-legged intersections. So, you can use either approach leg if you're not going to have a dedicated left turn lane. That's going to be the place that makes sense for the refuge to be, because you're not going to have people storing up in there and turn, make left-hand turns. The other part of it, too, crossing one lane is much easier than crossing two active lanes of traffic. And crossing one lane of traffic, instead of having to cross all four lanes of traffic, are all substantial improvements in terms of pedestrian ability to cross the roadway. So, as long as we can extend that median island really through the city and implement that to the points where we want to cross pedestrians, there's going to be a massive benefit in terms of connectivity between the east and west sides of the roadway. But those are all things that we'll be looking at. What's the appropriate solution for each one of those locations, though?
And, and one of the things, I think, at the beginning of the project, the lesser hardscape we put in, the better it will be, so that we evaluate how it is going, if we want to revert back. So, bump out and all that, refuse island and everything that we want to do, maybe we want to wait to see how it is operating under the road diet condition, and then go ahead and do those improvements that.
There are things that we can identify that part of the study, too, that we think. One of the reasons that IDOT extends the Phase One studies is because Phase One studies are a pain in the butt, especially if you have environmental elements of it. So, they'd rather study more and implement segments or elements of that, instead of coming back and have to reopen and study a portion of that later on. So, for them, easiest answer is let's study more, especially with the logical termini, implement segments of it, too. So, let's say we identify that. There's other types of strategies that can be implemented if the initial phase doesn't work. That could be a part of the study, too, and identify, okay, this would be the next step in terms of trying to implement something that's even safer.
Would the speed reduction in any or all of that project area be something that would come up right away? Do we think that that's a good idea to have that part of that to begin with?
Speed reduction in terms of strategies to implement or countermeasures, or in terms of signage and ordinance and policy?
Yes. I had a feeling that was going to be a question. I just feel like, you know, the things that I've seen happen over the years on, you know, everything from Fabian all the way to Mooseheart Road, is speed is almost always a factor. And if there's any way, as we're doing this, to, you know, break that barrier of bringing it down to fewer lanes, and also bringing the speed down at the same time, to me, is the right time to make that move, to try to get everybody, you know, as, to make it as safe as we can, by adding that as another way to, you know, reduce, or to increase reaction time, I guess, is.
So, I mean, I can throw out some general stats, too, that help this, this conversation. You know, based on the projects that have been studied by FHWA in terms of road diets, and they see reduction in crashes, generally between 20 and 50 percent, depending on the project, the conditions. And so, most of those accidents are the, or crashes are the rear-end, turning and angled crashes that we're talking about, that we're seeing. I think those were 89 of the 108 crashes that were reported. So, that's like 85 percent of the crashes along the corridor were the ones that would potentially be reduced by implementing a road diet. In here, like, one of the causes for that is speed differential between the lanes. You have people going on one lane significantly faster than they are going in the other lane. That all goes away with road diet. So, that is one of the natural traffic calming aspects of implementing a road diet. The city completed a speed study, right, Rahab? So, that's certainly something that we can evaluate and look at as part of where is the speed. I drive the corridor all the time, too. My wife refuses. She goes over to Kirk Road in Farnsworth instead of going down 31, because she's just uncomfortable driving. So, I definitely get the fact that speeding is a major concern through there, and we'll consider it, so.
I guess the other question that I have moving here is, we've also, for a long time, talked about the possibility of having a stoplight down at Mill, or Millview, at the, right next to the Moose. And would that be something that we would add into this as we try to get this implemented? Or is that something that would be like a staged part of the project? To try to see if that's something that they would, you know, maybe we don't do it immediately, but would they okay that? Would, what do we have to go through to get to that point? Because I think, especially with the left-hand turn operations down there, I think that that's going to get to the point where we have to have something down there.
So, to answer your question, yes. To turn it back, no, just kidding. The, you know, traffic signals go on when the, go in in locations when the traffic signal warrants are met for that location. So, typically warranted by either safety or proximity to a school, or school-type traffic, pedestrian-type movements. History of crashes, those are all things that can warrant signals. Based on the preliminary analysis of the traffic, it's right at the fringe of needing a signal or not needing a signal. So, that's something that we'll develop and expand on as part of the Phase One, because the warrants actually change if you have two through lanes of traffic, or you only have one through lane of traffic. So, that's something that we need to evaluate as part of the study, because those warrants actually come down on the side streets in terms of warranting a traffic signal.
And that was one thing I thought about, too, is, you know, as far as having a left-hand turn lane down there, you'd have almost infinite stacking ability down there to queue stuff up, because that turn lane could go all the way down to Mill Creek.
And so, we, we took a bunch of, we took, I think, eight total traffic counts through the corridor, and that was one of the locations that we were focused on because of the higher traffic volumes on the side street relative to 31, and so.
Tony, do you have any questions? Are you still there?
Yes, I'm here. Just listening.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure, since you're the only one that's online tonight from the council, I want to make sure.
Yep, I appreciate it, Alan.
Thank you. So, anybody else have any comments or questions?
I just like the fact that I really feel like this time in this project, we actually really have a two-way conversation, a real two-way conversation with IDOT. I mean, it really feels to me like the feedback that we get, and, you know, the, the not the, no, we're not talking about that kind of attitude that IDOT has had in the past.
Alan, do we need to take a vote on alternative one or two to give staff direction on which ones to push with IDOT?
Yeah, I don't think, it's just discussion tonight, but I think, yes, we should give them direction of which one we think we should go for. And, and I will say, from my standpoint, I think it really, the point, I don't know if it was you or Mark, said that, you know, it's easier to go backwards and restripe the road to, to the four lanes, but it's harder to go down and shrink it down to just the three, if we don't do that to start with.
Alan, I have a question. Matt, what would your suggestion be for Batavia?
On which alternative to go with? It depends. No, and that's such a cop-out answer, because it depends on what your priorities are, right? It's not a straightforward answer, because I could see a scenario where if queuing or stacking impacts pedestrian operations, well, then that's going to counteract one of the things, it's one of the major initiatives of this project. But I will say, from the perspective of IDOT, they control the timing through this, this corridor. They're always going to give preferential treatment to 31. So, when it comes to city streets that intersect the 31, the timing is, it's going to favor and make sure they're moving traffic on 31. So, a lot of those impacts will be felt on the adjacent side streets instead of 31 itself. So, while we're looking at what the operations on 31 are to appease IDOT as part of this study, to make sure that they don't feel like their facility is going to be negatively impacted by this improvement, we should also be mindful, I think, of what's happening at the Prairie, or Wilsons and Main Streets and other side streets as we.
Right, and now, hopefully, by the time we get to doing this particular project, we'll already have another stoplight at Prairie and Wilson. So, I mean, there's even more to be interconnected and more to be considered.
I actually have been working on that project. Don't yell at me for that one.
No, I'm not going to yell at you about it. I just, that's just something else that has to be considered.
Yeah, for sure.
Because it does impact that, and, you know. And, you know, again, you don't want to create something or create an issue and make something worse, because you made one thing better.
I think what happens, so to answer your question, I think we have a little more digging to understand what the best alternative is from a holistic, comprehensive standpoint. I think what I'm hearing from the city is ideally, a three-lane configuration is carried throughout the whole corridor, because it achieves those objectives of safety and traffic calming and adhering to pedestrian safety. The question is, and I think our challenge as the engineers, is how do we accommodate that, but also meet the operational needs at those critical signal intersection? And this conversation will continue forward into Phase One as well, engaging stakeholders in the council, the city, and having public meetings, and those will be critical elements of the next stage of this project.
Yeah, because I know that any time we end up changing the queue times on the roadway for vehicles, you're also changing that wait time for a walker, that, you know, the time you have set for crossings. If that changes, then all of a sudden, you don't have the ability to, I guess, legally make the right-hand turn or to go through that intersection when they have the right way to walk through there.
And we have software that we, like, this is modeled as a corridor from top to bottom, you know, south. And so that software can visualize how that traffic operates with one alternative, the other alternative has been effective means of indicating that type of, here's what option one looks like in the peak hours and morning traffic, pre-evening traffic with the one-lane in each direction, here's what it looks like in two lanes. And so that's something that we can certainly bring to the table, so you can visually see it, too, and just kind of get a, it's one thing when all the numbers are reported on a piece of paper and it says 400 feet of queue, but it's like, well, what does that really place you at?
I vote for one.
Okay. I'm saying one, too.
I abstain, because I think if we have not enough information to make any logical determination on this, so I'm not voting for either one. I agree with our engineers, as I said, something that we need to have more of a discussion and moving forward into Phase One. So I abstain.
I think the great thing is, is that regardless of either option, they both work. It's just what are your trade-offs with either one? And so to your point, this is the first time, probably, that the city has felt like you're at a point where there are lines of communication are open with IDOT, there's a willingness or openness to it, because other local agents, the other project we're working on was led by the local agency to implement the road diet. That's how it's working. It's not like IDOT's actively going and saying, we're going to shrink this down to three lanes. It's those local agencies saying, hey, we really have a need for this, here's why.
Well, and I think we felt that way for a while. I mean, it's become more and more apparent, especially with the intersection at Fabian and 31 has just been horrible in the last five years.
And the problem on that other project that we're working on is actually exactly what you guys are concerned about. They tapered the corridor in the wrong location, and people raced to get through that to beat the taper. And because they transitioned to one lane in each direction with on-street parking, and those are wider lanes that can accommodate bicyclists if they dare travel there, but that's a perfect example of just doing a lane drop and not being mindful of where it is relative to the traffic patterns. It's on a curve. People are freshening into the USPS parking lot, because they're just leaving the road because they're traveling way too fast based on the conditions. So those are things we're at least aware of, based on other experience and projects that we've seen, too, so.
Right? Yeah, I just think our discussion is to move forward, right? So whether it's alternative one or alternative two, we're just moving forward and getting more information and starting to study. I think we're all in agreement to that.
I'm good with that.
Yeah. Okay, let's go.
Okay, thank you so much.
We'll stay in our lane. I waited all night, waited all night to use that. Thank you.
Thanks, Matt.
Thanks, Rahad.
It says in your memo that you wanted us to choose. That's why I was pushing for that, that you wanted a choice.
I think, I think we want to, when we have a discussion with IDOT, we want to tell them what our preference is. And as Matt said, they will probably go for option one, but they will always ask for, or they will always give more green time to Illinois 31, which will impact side streets. So they will, they will get what they want, you know, we'll get what we want, but there will be some consequences for that. That's it.
How do you feel like, from your standpoint, and maybe Gary can talk about this, too, how do you feel from your standpoint, if we were to, say, we implement it and we go with three lanes all the way through, and then two or three, five years from now, it's just not working, how hard is it going to be for us to go back to four lanes downtown?
I think we have to go back and open discussion with them again, and you know that it's not a matter of days, you know, it takes months and.
Right. Well, and I mean, we look at now, how hard is it for us to just even get the timing changed on the lights? You know, I mean, that's not something that you get to go in and every six months you can change it.
Right, right. And, I mean, I have been here in the city for almost seven years. I have heard a lot of complaint about the side streets, especially Wilson. And finally, I feel that I'm there where people are happy and I'm not receiving any more complaints. But what Matt said, if we do one lane and if the traffic goes all the way to Houston or all the way to First Street, and you both shared experience that those are the streets that you are taking now, you'll be stuck there. So, you know, you'll be going somewhere else, you know, so those options will be gone. So I feel that we'll be back to a position where a lot of people may become unhappy, too. Gary, if you want to chime in, sorry.
Gary hasn't talked all night.
Rahad and Matt have been doing an excellent job. And it is, it's just a matter of balancing priorities. We've got to remember that we pull on the string here, it's going to, it's going to pull over here. And there isn't just one answer. Matt, maybe you can correct me if I'm wrong, but I'm going to guess that IDOT's going to make us look at all these options anyways as part of Phase One. They're not going to just allow us to look at one option and one option only, and that's it. So we did try and seek tonight to kind of get a flavor for what city council, and I think the, there's certainly a strong consensus for maintaining the road diet all the way through downtown. There's also people who want to keep exploring and make sure all the options are open, and I think we can communicate that to IDOT. You know, IDOT's going to, IDOT has their traffic hat on, unfortunately, and they still, they've, complete streets is more and more being embraced as newer people come into IDOT, but ultimately, there's still traffic people. So we need to get over that hump, and we need to emphasize pedestrian and bicycle as part of Phase One when we go into Phase One.
Awesome, thank you. Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
All right, we will move on, then, to project status.
I think we had that at the beginning.
Thanks, Laura.
Several pages of it. The only thing that I would like to open up for a possibly discussion on the project status was that Shannon had sent to all of you the draft for the request for proposals, and we tried to have that be a reflection of the one constraint that there seemed to be was the height of a project, but we also didn't say that that would exclude a project just because it didn't conform to that. But we really tried to take the feedback to keep it open as to what types of proposals people would feel that they could submit, you know, knowing that we have, show a preference for mixed-use development. So did anybody have any feedback on those, or do they look ready to go?
Laura, I had a quick question.
Yes.
So for, like, the First Baptist site, which is a very large site, is that something we would be willing to split for multiple developments, or are we looking for one person to come in and develop that site?
It is something that, if there was a proposal to split it up into multiple, we certainly could entertain that.
Okay, so if somebody.
We're really in the driver's seat. That's the nice thing about owning the property.
So if somebody came in and said, I love this corner, but I don't want the whole thing, I, you know, want to do something smaller, is that something we would consider?
It would be up to you, but one of the things we have to determine would be, how does that affect the value of the remainder that's left? So that if we end up with things that are no longer contiguous or an odd-shaped remainder, that's going to limit the possibilities for development of the remainder.
Is that something, but does the subdividing option need to be listed in the, as an option developer? Do they need to know that that's an option, or are they going to read this and just think, I need to take the whole thing, or no deal?
My experience with developers is that they will bring creative ideas, no matter what we put out there as the RFP. If they, if they think that they have an idea that doesn't necessarily conform to that, that they're going to call and have a conversation with Shannon or I or Scott or Anthony to determine whether we would be open to that. And I know that you have expressed an interest in considering projects that might subdivide larger tracts.
And maybe taller than what?
Mm-hmm, and taller. Right.
But I looked again, you don't specifically say anything about height. Is that what you were trying to say? Is the, unless I'm missing it and I just reading it too quickly.
Shannon, can you chime in on that?
Hi, everyone. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Great. Yeah, we made a comment in the document, I'm flipping through and trying to find it, that's basically, you know, up to four stories, based on the earlier feedback, but trying to leave it a little bit more open.
Yeah, I'm just not seeing where it says four stories, so that was the only thing that.
I saw it in there when I was.
Did you? Okay. Then I'm reading too fast? Okay. Okay, then.
Here's the language. It's in section D. Can you still hear me?
Yes.
Okay, sorry, I had a connectivity pop-up. It says, "The city is seeking proposals with commercial uses on the first floor in consideration of a public parking component." Oops, I went too far, I'm sorry. The pop-up threw me off my game here. "The city can establish a public-private partnership in creating an appropriate and sustainable private mixed-use redevelopment, preferably of up to four stories." So based on that feedback from our previous meeting, staff had kind of kicked around what the language should read, and that's where we landed, but we're open to talking through that this evening.
I'm good with four at the top, and if somebody really tried to convince me differently, then I'll listen to anything.
I'd just be interested to just see what kind of proposals come to us. I think one thing that we need to be careful, especially thinking about subdividing, is what that's going to cause as far as road closures. So if we thought that one large project was going to close the roads for a long time, when you're breaking this stuff up into smaller projects, you're going to have more time with roads closed, more disruption to the downtown. So.
More, more disruption to the businesses and the possibility of having one of the lots sit empty.
I just will be interested to see what kind of proposals that we get from developers. I'm not cutting myself off at four stories.
Well, and I think, too, if you look at the fact that it's in a TIF district, developers know the timeframe left in the TIF district, what's available, and the scale is in their best interest, probably, to do the whole thing and not try to piecemeal it. Because if they do that, and then they complete one in two years, one in four years, and one in six years, they've lost that ability to utilize the TIF as a payback option for incentive if they lose those years in doing that.
And when you see developments where there's probably the same number and they're shorter stories, it's because they've got more land, more land spread out to build upon. We're on one table to build up.
I don't know, specifically on the one North Washington site, if a developer came in and only had a project for four stories on half of that lot, let's say they took over the Wilson Street frontage, then the rest of it is undeveloped, they can stage all of their construction stuff on the other half of the land. I would, I would think it would require less road closures in that scenario. When that second half gets developed, sure, then there's going to be some, some road closures and some other disruptions, but I think that's the incremental approach, that that little area gets a lot of investment and it'll be great, and then that other half won't be as attractive, but this property down here will, Larson Becker will, so then that will be the one that gets, you know, focused on, and it'll go with the easiest. Hopefully, it'll just follow the easiest path of least resistance, but.
We just have to hope that we get a developer that wants to build small scales. They are out there.
Yeah, I think we'll listen to anything at this point.
Yeah.
So.
See what comes our way. We've got the, we've got about 20 developers that we were going to send this out to initially, as well as we know that developers nationwide are looking for these types of opportunities in this market right now. So we expect to get some nice activity on it.
Are you sure in this market right now?
Yeah, yeah. Every day, I flip through all of our local papers every day, and every single week, there's another one of these projects going up somewhere. In today's newspaper, it was Glen Ellen, I think about 350-unit mixed-use development in their downtown. They're clearing out a grocery store that's been there forever and making room for another one. And every week, it's another one. So I think we're, we're still in the sweet spot of this market, but at some points, you know, there's going to be enough apartments out there, and people aren't going to be building them, so.
Wheaton's got one right downtown, block from the train.
Yep.
Or from the tracks downtown.
They're building.
Yeah, south side of the tracks, block away. That's three-quarters of a block, I think it is.
Okay, well, thank you very much for the feedback, and we will get those out there. As soon as they're published, we'll let you know that they're published as well, so that you can share them if you know of any developers as well, to put that in the hands of.
Okay. Anybody else have any questions?
Gary?
Just wanted to do a quick update to council on the McKee pedestrian crossing removal. Following committee's direction, staff reached out right away to IDOT. IDOT was also contacted and know via the legislative drive-down. And so very quickly, they turned around initial comments to us directing that they needed engineering plans prepared for the removal of the crossing. Rahad took the initiative to start that process while I was on vacation, and those plans are being finalized, either they were today or they will be by tomorrow. Rahad's also reached out to a striping removal contractor. So once we have the contractor in place and the plans finalized, our streets division personnel will perform the actual removals with everything except the striping. We'll get all that back to IDOT. So I would expect that to happen quickly, and then, again, we'll just keep that process moving forward. I wanted to physically let you know that progress has not stopped. We're continuing to take steps towards removal of that crosswalk. And then one final reminder again, and I know we keep reminding, but just so people are aware, it is anticipated that Thursday is when tree removal will start at the Mahoney Creek Tributary Project. Forecast for rain is not good this week, so it may be that that date gets pushed, but at least we're trying to keep people informed. So Thursday will be the first day, hopefully, for tree removal.
Thanks, Gary.
Okay. And if we have no others, then I will need a motion to go into executive session for litigation.
Second.
You made the motion?
Didn't you make the motion?
No.
Oh. I'll make the motion.
Motion by you, or second by Sharon. Roll call, please.
You're?
Aye.
Sharon?
Aye.
Vocal singer? Miller?
Aye.
Rosado?
Aye.
Beck?
Aye.
Connolly? Johnson? Zofa?
Aye.
Wu?
Aye.
Aaron?
Aye.
Nieman?
Aye.
Yazi?
Aye.
Imalay?
Aye.
Motion carried 11 to 0.
Can I expect no action after the?
Correct.
The executive session?